The county commissioner is now in his chair.
Brother Doyle is going to say prayer for us tonight.
Let's pray together, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we do thank you for this evening. We thank you for the freedom that we have. Gathered together to make decisions and work together for our community. Father, we thank you for Benton County. We thank you for all the people that are here and the joy that we have. I've lived here 23 years. Father, I thank you for allowing me as an outsider to come in and be a part of this beautiful community. Father, I pray for each commissioner here. I pray for their families. I pray for them, that you will just bless them in a very special way. Father, we pray that everything will go well tonight, that everyone will work together, and that it'll be a great sign for our community, Father. Lord, we love you and we thank you for all that you do for us each and every day. Sing Christ's name that we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Price, will you lead us in the pledge?
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'd like to say that I have three thank you cards from Brett Burke and his family, and Sonny and his family, and Dewayne Fowler and his family, thanking us for the flowers that we sent to the funeral home. Roll call, please.
Rocky Preston. Dewayne Fowler. Jimmy Kinnison. Yeah, fifteen, fifteen present.
Need a motion for the approval of the agenda. Voice vote. Everyone in favor, vote aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, it's Carrie. We didn't have anyone sign up for the citizens' forums. Number three is the commissioners' forum. Do we have any commissioners that would like to speak? Okay, next will be our county mayor. You have anything? So number five is the approval of the minutes. Yes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Aye is Carrie. Number six, reported the public utilities. Yeah. Oh, that's fine, yeah. So all in favor of the Board of Utilities report, say aye. Anyone oppose? Carrie. So now we're down to our resolutions. Resolution one is by Sheriff Christopher to budget $7,275.06 received from the DTF to the sheriff's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
Chairman?
Yes.
I'd just like to make this statement, because this money, the $7,275, is from seizure money from our person that has assigned to no task force. To see that we are starting to get money coming in from that to replenish what we started out with. So it is starting with money to work your way through the court, it's starting to come in.
Okay. So everyone vote, please. You're in favor? Or if you're not?
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution two is also by Sheriff Christopher to budget $1,210 from revenues received from refunds, damages recovered, and from the sex offender registry to the sheriff's budget. I have a motion by Keith Arnold and a second by Jerry Price. Any questions? If none, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number nine is Resolution Three. It's a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to budget $8,337.96 received from insurance claims on a damaged patrol car to the sheriff's department budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions for the sheriff? If none, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution four is a resolution by Mayor Ward to remove airport property previously declared surplus property from surplus property status for airport use. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions for the mayor? Okay, everyone vote, please.
Keith Arnold. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution five is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of $4,500 received from the City of Camden to the library's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution six is a resolution by D O S Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $312,0027 received from federal S R funds to the school budget. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions about this resolution? Okay, if none, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution seven is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $10,000 received from a gift from TBA for the purchase of supplies to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? Please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution eight is also a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $136,000 received from B E P to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions on this one? Okay, if none, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes. Motion carries.
Resolution nine is another resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to transfer funds in the amount of $250,000 within the school's budget. A motion has been made by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Price. Any discussion or questions? Please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution ten, a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of $750 received from school health profiles to the school's budget to purchase supplies. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
Attorney Carter. Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes, one no. Motion carries.
Okay. Resolution number eleven. Is a resolution by Director of Schools Mark Florence to transfer funds in the amount of $8,000 within the school's budget to cover a shortfall. A motion by Marty Douglas and a second by Phil Milton. Any questions? Okay, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution twelve is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget $11,934.95 received from insurance claims on the county services building to the maintenance and repair of county buildings. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? There are none, so please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Next is Resolution thirteen. Is a resolution by Mayor Ward to amend Resolution 2023-0117-04 regarding the budgeting of funds within the sheriff's department budget. Correcting an error in the original resolution is passed. I have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Milton. Has anybody got any questions about this or need it explained?
It was just a typographical typo, so we just amended it to look right.
Okay, everyone please vote.
Attorney Carter. Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution fourteen is a resolution by Mayor Ward to reaffirm Benton County's government out of status concerning the provisions of T C A 68-120-101 regarding residential building codes and standards for one and two-family dwellings, townhouses and additions thereto of 30 square feet or more of interior space. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Anyone having questions about it? Okay, everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number fifteen is a resolution by Mayor Ward to budget funds in the amount of $8,000 received from a state grant to the senior citizens' budget. Our motion is by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Anyone having questions? Okay, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Okay, most of our next resolutions are two-thirds vote because we're appropriating new money. Number sixteen is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of $10,000 to cover a shortfall in the sanitation management budget for waste tire disposal. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Okay, please vote. Man?
Mike Newton.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mike.
Um, I know we've discussed this in meetings and different things, but where do we stand on possibly getting a tire disposal machine herself?
I've talked to the people in Nashville about getting a grant. I think if we wait just a little bit, we can get a grant to cover the machine to shred these tires. It's gonna be about $30,000 and probably about $5,000 for installation.
So about one year's worth of budget?
About one year's worth of, since it's went up. You know, the reason that we're having to put this money in there is we're having more tires this year, for one thing, but they're charging a $500 or $600 fuel fee now per load. And, you know, we're having seven or eight loads a year, semi-loads of these tires. So I'm checking on getting a tire shredder. I've already met with the landfill. They said it would probably end up costing us about $7,000 a year for disposal fees that they have to charge a little bit because it's tires. It didn't fall under our host agreement. But with the equipment, the labor, and the tire disposal fee, we're gonna come out better if we do it this way. I just would rather wait for a grant to purchase the equipment. If that's all right with y'all. It's gonna cost us the rest of this year to dispose of them, but we should be able to get the grant and get it all going by next year at this time.
Any others?
Uh, I would like to say, uh, when we're doing that and putting somebody out there to do it, I think that we're gonna go to recycling out there for the cardboard and other things because somebody's there all the time, five days a week, doing the tires. We could utilize them for other things in the recycling. So it'll offset the cost a lot better than paying, you know.
Any others? Okay, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number seventeen is a resolution by Mayor Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of $6,000 to cover a shortfall in the mayor's budget for data processing services. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Anyone having questions about this one? Okay, if none, please vote. Resolution eighteen.
Anyone want to change their vote?
I'm sorry.
Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Resolution eighteen is a resolution by Sheriff Christopher to budget $25,717 from jail workhouse courthouse litigation tax reserve to the sheriff's budget for the purchase of a tilt skillet for use in the jail.
Sheriff, you wanted to pull that one, don't you? You wanted to pull that resolution, didn't you?
Yeah, we've already got it.
Yeah. I would've pulled it, but I wasn't allowed since you was a sponsor, so.
Number nineteen. All right, number... Okay, now we're down to the appointing of notaries. This like, this number eighteen was pulled. So now...
Number nineteen still wasn't.
Nineteen, twenty, they're still on the...
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have the right agenda, so I'm sorry. Okay, Resolution nineteen. I got that. Yeah. Is a resolution by County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of $27,500 to the county clerk's budget to purchase needed office equipment. I have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions for, um, the clerk? Okay, I see none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Fifteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution twenty is a resolution by County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate funds in the amount of $300 to the clerk's budget to fund training fees for the certified public administrator certification program. Who's the county clerk? The county clerk for the certification program? Okay. Yeah. No, it's okay. I just didn't think it would be this way. I don't know if it was one or the other. Or who?
Charlie? Who, uh? I mean, it's a little back there. Yeah, it was, it's one of those, but you might wanna amend it to say...
Okay, does your resolutions, um, state in the beginning, in the clerk's budget? Or does it say county clerk's budget?
One each.
Okay. Then I just don't have it. Okay, it might, I don't have a corrected one.
Yeah, he's, he's...
Okay.
It's a...
Okay, there's no problems. We have a motion by Commissioner Burke and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions for the clerk? Okay, please, everyone vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Okay, now we are down to the appointing of notaries. Notaries, is this correct? Well, we're not doing any other business yet. Yeah. That's on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the appointment of notaries. We have one by Commissioner Milton and one by Commissioner Hall. Okay, everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Now we are down to, um, any other business.
No, Attorney.
Yes.
I moved that we suspend the rules for consideration of resolutions.
Okay. Do we have a, we need a second? Okay, everyone, please vote before amending, suspending.
Attorney Carter. Attorney Carter. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Okay, so now we are down to Resolution twenty-one. It's a resolution by the Benton County trustee bill to appropriate funds in the amount of $450 to the trustee's budget for needed training. Need a motion and a second?
You've got to run one again, I believe.
No, it's a resolution by Mark Ward.
It's from, it's from Mark Ward instead of...
Trustee. Okay. So it is sponsored by County Mayor Mark Ward, but it is for the trustee's budget.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions about this one? All in favor, please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Okay, Resolution twenty-two is a resolution sponsored by County Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate ma, I can't even speak tonight, to appropriate money in the amount of $1,900 to the trustee's budget for data processing equipment. I need a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas and one by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries, fifteen yes.
Number twenty-four is a resolution sponsored by County Sheriff Ken Christopher to transfer money from payroll line items that have a surplus to these expenditure line in order to complete the fiscal year. Need a motion and a second? Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Douglas.
Here.
Okay.
The Budget Committee voted to make recommendation to amend this resolution. And if you'll follow with me, starting under the expenditures, we voted to... and if you'll follow with me, starting under the expenditures, we voted to completely remove communication, completely remove maintenance, repair of vehicles, completely remove travel, completely remove data processing supplies, completely remove law enforcement supplies. Gasoline would stay the same at twenty-two thousand dollars. Under the expenditures, decrease expenditures, remove the entire deputy amount, remove the entire sergeant's amount, and reduce dispatchers to twenty-two thousand dollars.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'd like to make a comment if I could, Bill. Gene informed me today that the maintenance and repair of vehicles was already overdrafted by two thousand dollars, that we've had more money spent in that account than is in...
Did we put some money in the re, earlier resolution into that account?
Today?
Tonight, I believe we were, we put some into.
How much, how much was that? I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and Gene requested.
Is it a different account, different maintenance, repair of vehicles?
That's the one you set up in a different section of the county budget just for insurance payment.
I was thinking that on dating recovery, oh, excuse me, it was gasoline and law enforcement. Excuse me, I am wrong. You're, you're right, it's in that other line.
So you may want to address that.
Okay. Let's, let's back up and let me change the recommendation on maintenance and repair of vehicles, change it to four thousand dollars. And we would also need to increase the amount from dispatchers and radio operators to twenty-six thousand dollars.
Does everyone understand what the amendment is? Okay.
Did we hear the second?
Yes, Marty Douglas.
We're still on the question.
Yeah, yeah, we haven't voted yet. Did you want to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I was, uh, as the budget meeting, as the out of town, I apologize for that. Long story short, we can't operate like this. I've got one car down right now that's, that was worth twenty-five hundred dollars. We've got two or three other cars that, the way we're having to do things, and I don't blame the mayor at all, so don't get me wrong, we're not going to get a P.O. number unless the money's in, why not? I understand that. I can't wait another month for money to be put fly out of. You've got stuff like the maintenance and repair vehicles, and you've got stuff up here that we wouldn't ask for it if we didn't need. It's our money, and we're trying to move it, we did our budget, we're not asking for new money. And you just sit here and throw out stupid numbers, we can go from this to four thousand, we can drop this one two, we can drop this one five, uh, how do you know? You're throwing something out there on the spur of the moment. I don't think there's a whole lot of thought put into this, but we can't operate just data processing, stuff like that, okay? And that's against the mayor, don't get me mistaken. Project six thousand dollars go to data processing, but we can't move three thousand over our money. What do we do when we don't have the money to operate? The vehicles we're using are to protect the people in this county, it's an emergency operation, one for seven. This is total bull. I'm not up here to argue, I'm not up here to fight. When the sheriff's department has to shut down, we can't do something, we can't get to a call, it's bad enough because we don't have enough people. We can't get to a call because we don't have gasoline, or we don't have whatever we need because too many cars are on the sideline because we can't get the money to fix them. This county's going to get sued, and I'm not trying to get them sued, I'm trying to keep us front. This is totally ridiculous, and everybody in here knows it. It's just some crap that somebody's come up with, not much thought in it, and that's what I would say about it. If you do it, and we don't go on and do what our duties are, I'm leading with the judge today, I had to apologize to the judge, it's a continuing problem, we don't have the manpower, we don't have what we need when they pick people up in other counties and the court says pick them up, we can't work this way. We're supposed to be working for the court, we can't work and do our job. We don't have enough people. When I can't send them and I have to turn on somebody losing in another county, you've got a detainer on, he's getting out of prison in the morning. We can't, we don't have anybody to go hit. That puts that man right back on the street that's supposed to be coming back to this county. We're at the point now because we don't have work release program, the judge said a couple of these this week, we're sending them to the other counties for work release, that's what they're putting on. That's money that we're losing in this county because we're making as much as it is. This right here, we cannot operate on what somebody that don't know anything about what they're talking about just sits up here and comes up here. I've never come on your job and tried to figure what to do. Why in the world, if I've got thirty years experience and nine years as sheriff, and I've got a very good crew down there and knows what they're talking about, why can't we listen to them? Instead of you can't even transfer money within your own budget. We're not asking for money, we're just asking to transfer it. As long as we stay within that budget and we all know that we're going to run out of money, we're playing some silly game up here. Let's just move the money where we need it, when we run out then we start asking for money. That's all I've got to say, Chairman.
Anyone else like to speak? Commissioner Arnold?
Chairman. I know that when we, I went on the commission when we done the budget, uh, but, uh, as commissioner, our job is to look at the requests at the office owners, set a tax rate, approve budgets. When this money goes into the sheriff's budget, uh, that's his money. I mean, I was not elected to be the sheriff of Benton County and spend the money, you know, tell him where the money, that's what people elected, you know, or whoever's sitting in the office, they was elected to run that office. Once we give them the money, it's within their budget, then, and they're transferring within their budget, I think that's, that's good, you know, that's what they're supposed to do. It's not my job to micromanage it. I'm not saying that the budget committee's not doing a great job, I think they're doing a good job, they got a hard job, and I'm glad I'm not on that committee, okay? But I do think that once the sheriff or any officer gets the money in their budget, and they're moving money within their budget, they're elected to run that office, they're elected to manage that budget, and if they don't manage it, and they run out of money, then we have to look at it. But if it's in his budget, I think we need to approve the money that's in his budget. When he runs out, then we'll look at it and back up the buck, so I think, you know, that's just my personal opinion.
Commissioner Bane, would you like to speak?
Uh, I, I just wanted to say that if we can't have this department running off the des, deficit, we're playing Russian, we're elected citizens in this county. If they don't have the police protection, that, that if something happens, they can't get an officer out, there are kind of complaints from people within my district that they don't even have enough officers to cover funeral whenever one happens to block the road or, or reception, or anything else, and they're getting upset. But we've got all kinds of people moving in this county. Hopefully, they're all good, but we don't know this, and, and we've got to have a police force to cover and protect our citizens. They have the right for the, for this county to cover them with police protection, and we're not doing them any service if the sheriff doesn't have the money to operate this department. That's all I got to say.
Commissioner Stokes?
One of the first things that we asked the representative that came to the, uh, law enforcement committee was if they could, you know, in and paper to be sure that they had enough in their, uh, in their line items that they are increasing, which is deputies, sergeants, and dispatchers, and that they wouldn't run out of money in those line items if, if we were to honor these, uh, transfers. And is it my understanding that you will not need that money in those?
We don't believe we do, that we will. We don't know that for sure, we don't know in, in law enforcement, it changes on a day with basis, on a week with monthly basis. We think we can get by on what, what we're moving, and this is what the county commission asked me to do, move money from salary line item over the date, so that's what we're trying to do. I don't necessarily agree with it, but that's what they've asked me to do, and that's what we're trying to do. But to take you positively, nothing in what we do is not, it's just likely to stop you by the state inmates. There is no positive in that, whoever, when they built a jail, they said they was told it was going to pay for the state inmates. A sheriff doesn't have control over state inmates. I could have a hundred in there, we're rocking, we're making money, and they can come in tomorrow and say we're paid, I have no say-so over that at all, and we could be without them. We've done pretty good this year, I think, considering, uh, we've got the figures here where we brought in, uh, well, we don't have October's figures, but with October's figures estimated to be about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, we're bringing off border bills this year, also state inmates. That money got disappeared, there was a whole lot of work into that, but that's pretty good with everything like this. We're holding right now, we can't hold a hundred and forty, we've been holding around eighty-five or so, and almost half of those are state inmates. We don't have the staff to hold any more than that. It varies from eighty-five, we might get down to sixty, we might get up to ninety-five. We're trying to keep it as low as we can because we don't have the staff. But I think that the jail has done a very good job operating in that much money and time to do it right now. I, I can't, I can't answer that, Commissioner Stokes, for sure, but I'm trying to do what the county commission asked by taking from salaries, because we are short on staff, so that leaves a little money in salaries. Positively, no, I could not take it positively. Yes, she, she wants to vote.
With the number of pay carries left, based on the number of issues that are filled plus a little extra in case we do higher, that should be sufficient to get us through the year.
Okay, any others? Would anybody from the budget committee like to respond to anything? Got any?
Well, I would respond that we certainly understand the sheriff not being able to be able to leave the other night is where he needed to be, and we understand that, but we have questions about this, and what we tried to do was provide enough money to get through another month so that we could try to set up a meeting with the sheriff and try to determine what monies are going to be needed in these line items. This resolution, uh, dispatchers, I have an expenditure report on the dispatchers, and we're running right at fifty percent, but that does not include any overtime. Any overtime would have to come out of that. We've already transferred large amounts of money out of payroll line items, and we need to take a very close look at that before we start transferring that money out, because if we run out of money, we've got a problem there, too. So it's not just a matter of taking care of this, you've got to look at what it may cause down the road when we move this money.
Yes.
Overtime comes out of a different line item.
I understand that, but we've been running short of overtime, money in overtime, and that's where a lot of this money has been transferred to. In the past, it's been out of payroll line items to cover overtime. So if we're short of people, we're having to run the overtime, if we're having to run the overtime, we're probably going to have to take money out of payroll line items. Now, to try to prevent that from happening, since we have hundreds of thousands of dollars that we have transferred out of payroll line items in the past, I would suggest that we have money in those line items to hire personnel. But we don't do the hiring of them, so I can't, I can't, you know, address whether we have, have actually had candidates that are qualified, but the money is there to do that hiring. And, uh, as I say, we're trying to make sure we've got enough money to get through at least another month to try to get a meeting with the sheriff and see exactly what we've got. I, this expenditure report I was pulled on the fourteenth, so it's a little bit old, uh, in terms of all the expenditure. We're not trying to stop the sheriff's department, we're having funds to operate, we're trying to operate within the funds that we have, and we still have a lot of fiscal year left to get through.
I think the entire problem comes down to we're short of the budget, and now we're trying to shuffle money until we run out, and it's holding the sheriff's office up and doing what we need to be doing. I've got parked cars for a couple of weeks to get that money in there, get a P.O. We need them cars on the road, they need to operate. This is just, it doesn't even make any sense what we're doing. So if, if we was budgeted what we should have been budgeted, we wouldn't be having any of this discussion.
Commissioner Melton, was this approved in the budget committee meeting? Was it amended?
The budget committee voted to make these recommendations, with the exception, we voted to remove completely maintenance of the pair of cars, but in my amendment, I came back and changed that to add the four thousand dollar back issue, if there's enough money to get those cars running.
Anyone else? Okay, everyone please vote.
Vote for the amendment, right?
We're voting on the amendment right now that's being made. Anyone wish to change their vote? Five yes, ten no, three yes. Motion failed. Okay. So now we can go back and if you want to amend it in another way, or we can go back to the original like it was before tonight.
No, I'm not, I'm not making an amendment.
Okay. Then we're back to the original resolution, so I need a motion and a second. Okay. So anybody want to talk about the resolution, the original resolution? Or ask any questions? Sheriff?
Sheriff, when we put in there what we thought we needed, and moved from the, from the line item that we was requesting, and I think that we need to pass it because that's what our bookkeeper have looked at and figured that we need to get us through, I think we ought to pass it as it is.
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Nunrie?
Being on the budget committee, I, I realize why you wasn't there the other night, and I, you were exactly where I would have been as well. It would be so helpful on budget nights if we had somebody there that answers questions when we do have them, because a lot of times we don't understand what we're looking at exactly. Because we're not police officers, and that, that would be a great help if, you know, if you can't be there for you to see that somebody was that needs something.
Commissioner Nunrie, I'll try to make them, my mother's doing much better, when things do come up, a lot of times, and I'm just being honest with you, I can't make
My mother's doing much better. When things do come up, a lot of times, and I'm just being honest with you, I can't make this meeting. Because I'm out of call, but we ain't got three deputies covering the county tonight, because y'all have to leave. I'm the next man up to go out. And so I can't excuse, I can be there, but I can promise you that I'll try to be there. And if I can't, I'll send somebody from the office staff that can throw numbers out there for me. If that, if that would happen. I'll try my best to be there myself.
It just leaves us not so in the dark.
I understand. And y'all don't know anything about law enforcement. I don't know anything about teaching. And, and I don't know anything about a lot of things. I'm pretty stupid on most things. I do know what we're talking about here, and I will try to be there every time I can or have a, have a representative there.
Okay, now we're going to be voting on this resolution, the original resolution, with no amendments and no changes. So everyone please vote. Transfer within the budget, within his budget. Anyone else wish to change their vote? Ten yes, four no, eleven say. Motion failed. Okay, now we're down to resolution twenty-four, which is another resolution sponsored by the sheriff. It says it will be necessary to transfer funds from payroll line items that have a surplus to these expenditure lines in order to complete the fiscal year. We have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes.
The budget committee also voted to make amendments to resolution twenty-four. And if we go to the increased expenditures with me, was to remove all of contract with private agencies, remove all maintenance and repair of equipment, to reduce custodial supplies to one thousand dollars, remove drug and medical supplies, remove food preparation supplies, reduce food supplies from forty thousand dollars to ten thousand dollars, remove natural gas, remove other supplies and materials, reduce medical claims to five thousand dollars, and remove other charges. And then to decrease expenditures on guards, reduce to sixteen thousand dollars. There was some question concerning the amount of money being taken from guards. We only had two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars showing on expenditure report to get through the rest of the year. And we're reducing that by a hundred and seven thousand dollars. That's dropping it down to a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars to, to get through the rest of the year. Uh, so there was a lot of concern with reducing it by that much money. And once again, we did not try to knock everything out. We tried to be sure there were enough funds to cover for a month until we could try to get, uh, leading with the sheriff on this.
Want to say anything, Sheriff?
Yes, ma'am. It's exactly as the last one was. If we didn't need the money, we wouldn't ask for it. Moving it within our own line, line item here, within our budget. We run out of food supplies and we don't feed that back there and we run out. We're looking for a lawsuit. We've got to feed the prisoners. We have to. Custodial supplies, we're known for having probably the cleanest jails in the state. Everybody comes in, inspects, there's this. Making this in equipment, you know, just mark them out because somebody doesn't know anything about it thinks that that's what we need to do. Oh, I don't think you need it. Y'all know what a cop, that's better to be quiet. That's what I used to do. Most time I'm quiet because I don't know anything about it. Medical claims, five thousand dollars. You're talking about this, uh, the contract with private agencies? Are you talking about the medical contracts that we've got?
It's your, it's your resolution. I don't know.
Well, you said if we can't do nothing, so are we going to write our contract with the medical?
I said, I said remove it. I don't know whether it's with your, uh, whether that's with your, uh, medical or if that's with some other private agency contract.
Oh, we, we got, uh, commissaries, we've got fonges, we've got people, some things, and they're all necessities. I'm not going to sit here and fuss about it. I'm just saying to do it. After games, pick up the heat off that fine morning.
We're seven, you know, we're seven months into the budget and we've spent a hundred and five percent of our food budget. But we've got less prisoners. I, I, I think we need to have questions answered before we just give them blank P.O.'s for things of that nature.
I agree. We get a lot of comments been made about, uh, the food and everything. If you look at the price of food, if one of us, look at the numbers that we pulled up, that we backed to spend on food, not just numbers that are spelled out there, uh, I think you'll see that we're.
Are we running less prisoners now than we did last year? Are we running less prisoners now?
Running less prisoners than we did last year. Uh, but we're also down food costs.
I, I would like to say something on that. I appreciate what the budget committee's doing because we're supposed to be good stewards of the county's money. A lot of this is probably because of me, on, on the food especially, because since I've become mayor, we have eighty-three hundred dollars a month to spend on food at the jail. And it's twenty thousand a year more than you had last year that they anticipated the food costs to go up. They gave you twenty thousand dollars more in that account than they did last year. Your prisoners have been running about thirty percent less than last year. So I have a real concern that we're not being a good steward of the money. Because we've spent a hundred and five percent in seven months. I know we had to talk about the cars and all in October, November. And after that, we started spending twenty thousand plus per month on food. And it's run that account completely out, and that's why I brought this to the commission's attention. It's a real problem. I was told by the sheriff's department that they were stockpiling food whenever I questioned them. So if we've stockpiled the food, then we shouldn't be needing more money in there. It's self for the milk and bread and, and things that perish pretty fast. If we've stockpiled all that food, then you should be getting by on two or three thousand a month instead of twenty thousand a month. That was my only concern and that was my only advice. So the other things, you have money in your budget. In these other line items that they marked out, they're not zero except the maintenance and repair of vehicles and one other one. And they felt like there was enough in there sitting in the budget committee meeting to make it for another month so we could talk to you about the other ones. But transfer a hundred and seven thousand dollars and forty thousand of that be food? I don't understand why we're spending that much more on food. I mean, I really don't.
Let, let me try to answer that, Mayor. Our numbers ain't matching though, because I've got the numbers here of what we've spent. The only time we got close to twenty thousand dollars was when we had to go with class. And we couldn't attend anything in June, get ready for the new fiscal year. So we had that month and the next month, July, and it was nineteen thousand. The rest of the time was the numbers for the jail. And we have for food costs, twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, ten thousand eight hundred and five, fourteen thousand and seventy-five dollars, ten thousand five hundred and forty-four, twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty-one. So that's not twenty thousand dollars per month. Over twenty thousand dollars, none of us got. I was asked about the menus, that we pull the menus up, what we're serving. That has to be approved by the state, by dietitian, have to have certain amount of calories. They, they've got to have all the stuff that the state says, uh, we're doing exactly what the state says. They have to give, stockpile food with items that the jail administrator had found out from other counties that they was having trouble getting. Might have trouble getting that when he needed it and were required to feed it. I told him to go ahead and buy what he could in case we needed that, and it was in short supply. We didn't stockpile a whole bunch of food. We stockpiled what we could and things that would not have expiration that long. Go buy a meal. We're doing all we can do, what we've got to do, we can. And that's exactly what I told the people in this county I'd do. I did the best job I could with what I was given. We all know when that budget come out, the sheriff department didn't get what they were supposed to get. We know that. The money given immediately. But when you need it, we're going to give it to you. And then when we ask for it, even in our own budget, it's nothing. So I don't know what to do other than just, when we can't run, I'll call people and tell all the county commissioners to talk to them. All the head of the budget committee will see what's out. About two o'clock in the morning, they'll maybe call me.
Yeah.
I'll think, we won't bother them. That's all I got. Sheriff, I asked the sheriff this morning, uh, midday about the food. And what we was feeding the prisoners was not the daily, just giving them home sandwiches. I guess they do give home sandwiches. You know, they do have to be approved by a dietitian. Again, my understanding is all this money is within sheriff's budget. This is transferred within his budget. He'll be the one that's responsible. He runs out of money, you know, and he hasn't raised taxes or something or money things. But we, you know, this is money within his, but we gave him to spend and operate. Medical costs, forty thousand dollar medical claims and that type of. But I know that they're trying to arrest somebody that, or somebody that has to go to the hospital, they do a medical referral or they, uh, release them on the offensive support, but we don't have to pay their, their medical bills. At a place in the night and the rest, a lady had a cut leg and she needed to rest it the next day because she had to go to the ER. So there, you know, I know there, there's ways that they're trying to save, save money. Again, I think, you know, he was elected to do that. As far as stockpiling food, I mean, if you bought food, you know, that was hard to get. We all know for certain things hard to get. I got seventy-two bags of Jackson and Millway. Y'all can't have none. But I stockpiled because it went missing. It's hard to get. So, you know, that's my thing, you know, it's his budget. And spend the money he thinks he, because he's the one dealing with it every day. I'm not down there telling him what to do.
I don't want y'all to, to take it wrong. I'm not trying to tell him what to do. I know my food cost at my house has not doubled. Y'all gave him twenty thousand more last year to make up for what's went up. And we're still on pace to double the food cost on the year if they continue the way they're spending it. I think it's something that we, as a commission, are charged with in asking a question, and that's all I'm doing.
I want you to ask the questions that I brought up. I brought a copy of the menu for two weeks. It repeats itself every two weeks. It doesn't change it on it. If any of you want to look at it, you'll see what we're feeding them. I don't know. I, I mean, for lunch every day, I can eat that butter jelly sandwich, slice of cheese. I don't think we can cut it much. Breakfast's about the same, supper. I mean, if we're feeding them what the dietitian says we have to feed them, and it's fitting within the state regulations that we have to do, we have to go by that. Doing what I can. I can't help what the food costs are. We have two or three different vendors. And we see what's on sale and we get what we can get and catch the best deals that we can get. Food cost at one other, I can assure you, nobody's taking anything out of that table down there. I had one deputy in there the other day that I walked in, uh, there was some leftover food. And they was going to have to throw it out and he, he got a couple pieces of chicken to lay out. I told him not to get anything else out there because I didn't want to catch a blunt hearing who's feeding that. Nobody's eating out of there. It ain't supposed to be eaten out of there. Again, I, I just have to ask this a question. Y'all put, this is coming out of doors. If y'all put it in papers that and the figures, if y'all feel like you're going to need that money. If we could hire the guards, we probably would. Right now, we just got through with taking civil service test last Saturday. And we had hardly anybody apply. As I've said many times in these meetings, I'm not trying to be bad about it. I'm not going to apply here until they get turned down everywhere else, because we're not paying this much. I would do the same thing. If I'm looking for a job in Henry County, I'm going to go with Henry County. Henry County don't hire me, I'll go Carol County. Carol County don't hire me, I'll work my way down the list. Down the list until I get down where somebody hires. So we're way down the list of getting everybody to apply, even people that's not been in law enforcement. And when we do hire people that's not been, we get them trained and the services are trained, they leave and go, well, they make more money. And I don't blame them. I don't ever fuss in anybody for leaving. But almost everybody, not everybody, but almost everybody leaves. They say, leaving for the money. I get better benefits, better money. We're not, we don't have anything to compete for. So we get what we get. But I don't see us, Mr. Stokes. We try it all year and we had, every time we gained somebody in the jail, we would, we'll go somewhere else. And then we get another one hired and we'll look. So we, we're staying at about three or four on the shift and the folks outside.
The, the food cost is a concern. That is, that is a concern as a figure of concern because it's like earlier. So, you know, we're, we are looking to double what we spent last year into.
Y'all are welcome to come down and go and match up figures. I'll be glad to. We invited everybody many times to come down. I mean, want to come down and look at it, sit down, we can roll it, see if we're wrong, we'll say we're wrong. But I just don't, I don't see where we, we can do anything more than what we're doing.
And on, on the night of the budget meeting, I know that you were arguing with the other, we all understand that. But the budget, the budget committee met for two hours on Valentine's night. It was, it was hard. They deliberated over this one for a long time before coming to the figures that they, they came to making those recommendations before. It, it wasn't just sliding like, you know, it's sheriff department. It wasn't like that. I, I didn't, I never felt that at all. But it's, it's difficult, you know, from this, from, from here to try to justify.
I promise I, I would not want to be on. It's a tough job.
But it's hard to justify these expenditures, you know, which we have five more months left in the budget. We definitely don't want to try. Sure. And then.
Y'all are welcome to come down and we'll sit down with bookkeepers. We'll sit down there with the kitchen manager and see what we can figure out. See if there's a better way to do it. If there is, I'm all about.
Would you bring them to the budget committee meeting, yes, ma'am?
I would, yeah. But I mean, if that's what, if that's what you want to do, I'll only ask one thing if I bring the people up there in the budget. Don't go talking down on me because I've found out all that on the thing.
I don't think no one's talking. I don't think no one's talking down on you. We're trying to help you. But when you see a hundred percent increase on one line item and it's one of the biggest line items, I think we have a problem.
I think, I'll be glad to look at it.
This budget committee, this commission, and myself will do nothing but try to help you. But you're going to have to try to help us too. We're not talking down on you. I promise. We're all trying to work through this.
I've moved money where y'all asked me to move it from.
But what I'm saying, spending a hundred and five percent in seven months, when you have less prisoners than the year before, something's wrong.
Has anybody?
So we need to come to the budget committee and talk. We, everybody needs to get together and find a solution.
But has anybody called the sheriff and said, we can come sit down with me? No, I didn't even know when we're supposed to turn our budget in until, uh, we're budgeting. Until just a couple of days ago, when we was first notified and then nobody told me. They'll tell somebody in my office, but they don't tell me. Nobody ever talks directly to the sheriff. I hope I find out.
When did that email go out?
It's been a while though.
It's, it's been going, you know, a few days that that information went out. And it went out to the department head, so it would have gone two years.
I didn't get it though.
Never sent by email.
Well, I looked, I didn't get it.
I, I assure you, we're not against you. We're just trying to get everything running smooth.
I, I would like to sit down and talk to y'all. Like I said, if there's a better way to do something, let's do it. And if we're wrong, I'll say, hey, we made an mistake.
Is, is there anything that's on this list of, of items that you're wanting to increase? Is there anything that you see that you can do without this one or lower yourself? Because it's your resolution and then come back. Because it's your resolution and then come back before the budget helps you to bring that to the end next month?
We can do that. We'll look at it and see if we can change it.
Uh, honestly.
What I'm asking is future, future tonight. Could you do that tonight?
Uh, I'll sit out here with my, my girls in the office there.
I honestly think that's what the budget committee was recommending, is doing it on these, uh, numbers that they come up with and, and having this discussion.
We wanted to be sure that we were able to get through at least one month.
We wanna cover the bills we have.
And get through one month such as the average of, we put in ten thousand dollars for the, for the food because it was running somewhere in that neighborhood.
That, that was their intention by, uh, amending this, is to get through the month, talk to the sheriff, ha- have this sit down and try to figure out what's going on.
Chair. We'll just leave this, meet with y'all for next, next meeting. But we get set here, dusting out the sleeping boards, eh? Table for now.
I, I would not recommend it totally because we have my, uh, line items that are over down. We need to, we need to make this, these changes.
It needs to be amended in passing.
Would y'all wanna take a recess? I'm gonna call a ten minute recess. And let him have time to look at that and see if he can make some changes.
One place that I would suggest you do is the officers do not like other categories. When it says other charges and other supplies, four ninety-nine, five ninety-nine, the officers just like. Under the decreased expenditures, that would balance at twenty thousand dollars for decreasing and twenty thousand dollars for increase. Did I get, does that?
Yes.
With you? Okay. Does anybody have any questions about that?
You're gonna give us a copy of that, right?
You won't be able to read my, I, we'll get you something.
Does everyone understand? Okay, so we're going to vote on Commissioner Melton's amendment that he just made.
You might, yeah, you might go over them one more time, so if anybody didn't get them written down on their paper, they can.
In the decreased expenditures, the guards would increase, it would be $20,000. Under the increased expenditures, custodial supplies would be $1,000. Food supplies would be $10,000. Other supplies and materials would be $2,000. Medical claims would be $5,000. Other charges would be $2,000. So the total under increased expenditures should total at $20,000, which matches the decrease total.
Kai, do we have any questions?
Question. Does that cover all the bills that we've got outstanding that Melton needs to pay?
To my knowledge, that would be enough to cover them. You know any, Mayor?
If there's a cutoff date to that, because we do have some bills that we do have to settle to the courthouse, so are you including those in? Well, they wouldn't know about that.
No, we don't, that can't be included, because I have no idea what they're doing.
Just wanna make sure we're paying what we owe right now. I think we'd be in good shape to make one.
Charlie, did you get that too? Are you, you good with it? Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we're voting on the amendment that was just made by Commissioner Melton. You're in favor? Vote yes. If not, vote no.
Thirteen of stern.
Anyone wish to change your vote?
Fourteen yes and one of stern.
Now, we will be voting on the resolution as amended. You ready? So everyone vote, please. Anyone wish to change your vote?
Fourteen yes and one of stern.
Okay, do we have any other business from any Commissioner, Commissioner, I mean Sheriff Christopher?
I wanna see if I can give Mr. Melton, the county attorney, I had asked him a while back, brought my attention about that the county has a blanket policy on dental for the inmates. And what they've done in the past is they just shouldn't have tracked inmate that through that. I got him to check in on this, that he was late. I believe you checked the CTAS, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was from the CTAS.
Jim Austin sent back this, adjusted it, "In my opinion, a blanket policy of extracting for all inmate mental problems is constitutionally suspect and facts are deliberate and different. If this is the county's policy, they need to rethink it." We've got a lot of inmates, as you know, we've got a lot of mess. We got a lot of inmates that have a lot of teeth. When they come in, well, they got dental work that has to be done. In the past, we've just been doing extraction. I won't let y'all know that I think, and it's gonna be up to y'all what we'll do, but that comes from CTAS and our county attorney thinking. I think we're gonna have to start doing the things, whatever they need, instead of just taking the tooth out. Because that is, that is something that we're gonna get into if we're, I think. If we don't furnish them proper dental here, they would've got if they was on the outside. I think that's what it comes down to. And that's gonna be a lot more offensive, but that's CTAS' opinion. I want to run it by the county commission and let y'all know. If we, when we make these dental appointments, when Dennis says, hey, we're gonna do a root canal, we're gonna do whatever. That's what, we don't, of course, we don't have to do any cosmetic stuff, but what they, the same treatments that they would give if they were not in jail.
It wouldn't be dearly, they paid the shit. They wouldn't be dearly, they paid the shit.
They don't buy that.
I don't like it, but what it is, that's what CTAS recommended, so I just wanna know before I, what we're gonna do, before I go make the appointments that Dennis tells us. This is what we need to do, and we have to take them back to the doctor.
Commissioner King?
Yeah, what about the counties?
The other counties are following CTAS and what they say. Couple of counties that I had talked to, that we just go on CTAS recommendation on anything like that, because we have the legal experts that we all pay for. I think they, whatever they need, and it seems a shame we have to do that, for ourselves, but they're in our custody and we gotta take care of them until they leave.
And do they have a policy on that? If they do, do you get more, do or do? For the Hoover County that does this, if they've got any guidelines?
I'll check and see.
That may be something to look at. Guidelines, that would be good to have.
Yeah, I just wanna know, this is coming up quite often, first of all, to my attention, and it's that the medical company we've got it with, that also students have been copying all. They, they're not doing that at heart, but we need, we need to get on board with what needs to be, so we don't wind up in a civil lawsuit. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay, we've got one other lady that is here, and she'd like to speak, it's Sherri Hill. She is the chairman of the audit committee, and she didn't realize that she was supposed to come forth and sign in at the beginning of the meeting, so she needs to give us her report from the audit committee.
Good evening. I'm Sherri Hill. I am the chairman of the Benton County Audit Committee. Just a little background, the Benton County Audit Committee is a statutory committee created by TCA 9-3-405. A resolution that county commissions pursuant to the statutes set the number of committee members at five. The audit committee is external to management responsibilities and duties, and at a minimum addresses financial and other reporting practices, internal control, compliance with laws and regulations and ethics. The committee members newly approved by the commission are Dana Ferguson and Kevin Step. They join previously appointed members Jennifer Hatch, Lisa Holliday, and Sherri Hill. We had our January meeting, and we elected Lisa Holliday as secretary, Kevin Step as vice chairman, and Sherri Hill as chairman. Just to go back a little bit, the last report was February of 2022. At that time, we had just gotten the fiscal year 2021 audit in, and we were, we were reviewing it at that time. The findings were minimal, and all of those were rectified very quickly. The fiscal year 2022, all meetings were filed with the county clerk, and the minutes of the committee are public record and copies can be obtained from the county clerk. In November of 2022, the comptroller found some computation errors regarding pensions at the electric company. And this was not considered a finding, but it was a reporting error and was corrected on the financial reports. The fiscal year 2022 audit has been completed by the Tennessee comptroller, and it was filed in January. The audit committee reviewed this in our January meeting, and there were some findings in the mayor's office concerning deficiencies in the accrual and payment of compensatory, compensatory time. Mayor Ward was in attendance at the committee's January meeting, and the committee was advised that this was in the library department, and the mayor's office has already corrected this. No other findings were noted. There have not been any complaints, anonymous or otherwise, filed with the BCAC in the past year. The audit committee is just a reporting committee. We are reporting to the county commission our work done in 2022. All findings have been rectified, and the committee has no concerns for which the comptroller or law enforcement needs to address. And to the best of our knowledge, and believe it, none of us is aware of any actual or suspected fraud affecting county government. This is my report. Is there any questions? Okay, I will file this with the county clerk.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Cross.
Do we have an update on our request, state about the issues we had around our last election?
I have not received any response, has the mayor's office?
We have not received anything at all.
Anyone else?
Do they want us to follow up on that? Do y'all want us to follow up on that, since we've not received anything? I mean, that's up to y'all.
I think, I think we do need.
I think you deserve a letter anyway, or an email or something. There's no, there's not been any acknowledgement of your concern, so it's up to y'all.
Okay. I can write a letter or an email and ask for a response, ask why we haven't received a response. I can do that. Anything else? All in favor, say y'all? Anyone oppose?